Well, now, Coney County Board of Commissioners meeting today is Tuesday, July 12th, 2022. If you're joining us virtually to comment during the public comment portions of the meeting, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. After a moment of silence, we're going to ask Mark Thomas to lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, for all.
First item of business will be to approve the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item, a statement in a march from citizens. This is for anything not on the agenda for tonight. Very well, any statements or remarks from commissioners? Now, just reminder, we're doing a five-year update to the comprehensive plan. We have an online survey available on the website and that'll be open through Thursday, September 1st. So we encourage everybody to get on there and help us figure out what the county needs to look like. Also, we have some appointments coming up. Okoni County Planning Commission, we have two appointments. Recreational Advisory Committee. We also, we have four appointments for that one. And then Kipo County County Beautiful Commission has one appointment as well. So those applications are available on the website. And then did want to recognize Jill Faulkner, who has received her Level Two Certificate as an advanced certified human resources manager. So when you see Jill, be sure to say our congratulations on that. Next time will be approval of the minutes. This will be for our regular meeting on June 7th, Town Hall meeting on June 14th, and our meeting, agenda setting meeting on June 28th.
Mr. Chairman, can you do it too?
Certainly.
So because I wasn't here at Town Hall meeting.
Okay, so we'll take the June 7th and June 28th meeting minutes together.
I make a motion to approve the regular meeting count and the agenda meeting June 7th and June 28th. So.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Our next item will be the Town Hall meeting for June 14th.
I make a motion to approve the Town Hall meeting minutes as submitted. Sir.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is update on the new library.
Good evening. Rob Ponder and Carmen Ponder, we're Ponder and Ponder Architects. We're very excited to be here tonight to tell y'all an update of what we've been able to figure out and work on about out at the Wire Park complex. You've got a copy of everything that'll be on the screen, this way the Zoom people will be able to see it. And I will use this to be able to point to, be able to help people understand a little bit what's going on. In our firm, Carmen is the designer. She's the one who figures out how to make it work, how it's going to look on the outside, but she's not working on public speaking. So I'm going to try to carry over and tell y'all what she's accomplishing here. The building to 25,000 square foot existing, I think it was used for warehousing when it was part of the complex. It's got a little bridge that connects it back to the main part of the building right there. It's back in the back over here, there's a little connection point that connects this building over. We're going to be able to give a 21st century library within that shell of a building that y'all have for 20,000 square feet of the 25,000 square feet that is currently existing. And the remaining 5,000 square foot will remain unfinished space that will be able to be used in the future for the growth of the library, to be able to expand the services and/or expand the collection or do other things within the building. The Wire Park is already set of vernacular finishes. They have a set brick that they're using throughout the whole complex. They have a metal panel system that's very durable, long-lasting. They're using a color brown to be able to paint. So they have asked us, and we like what they're doing out there. So we have taken their materials and we have applied it onto the building that we have. Currently, if you went out there, this is actually an indoor space that sticks out from the box, the 25,000 square foot box. We're going to take the skin off of that and we're going to have an outdoor covered arrival point for when you arrive into the, into the complex. The rest of Wire Park has a pavilion over here, an outdoor space. This will be a very pedestrian-friendly user area for people coming up to the, to use the library, to using all of Wire Park. But also they're hoping for a whole lot of people going to the library, will then patronize the food places, or the people at the food places will come patronize the library, a lot of cross connections for that to happen. The last piece of this is that we do want to identify the library. So we're putting a little feature out front that will identify this out of the big complex there as being where the library is if you're coming to look for the library. The site plan itself, this is the little bridge. This is the large building that is the rest of Wire Park that is behind us. This is the little pavilion. This is where they've taken some of the roof off to create a food court. So the library main entrance is going to be along this covered area right here. These will be the main doors that get in. We do have the convenience of having some very close-in parking that is right next to the library. There's a very wide set of stairs right here. And one of the features that we're doing as part of the library is to go ahead and put in a handicap ramp. They're going to put in two new handicap stalls here. The rest of them are way over on this side of the complex. But these will be convenient handicap, but this ramp will allow seniors, people with strollers, you know, small kids or whatever, to be able to take, come from this park and to be able to come up to enter into the library at that location. There's a service entrance that's existing, a service drive. So all that kind of works for the way a library would want to use this. We were able to determine in looking at the structure of the building that it was bare minimum structure to carry lights and a sprinkler in order for us to put ceilings and mechanical ducts and air conditioning and all that into this. We are having to add two row, a row of beams inside the building in one location here and one location here. There'll be 10 new columns that will show up into the, into this and the interior designers working the furniture around the new columns to be able to do that. But within the library itself, you'll have an arrival and then a very large, open reading room, which is, you know, traditional feel of a collection with, with books on shelves and that type of thing. But in addition to that, it will have, I forget, 20 or 30 laptop computers that are available for the patrons to use. For, you know, kids will have a whole dedicated youth area for the two different age groups of use. You know, the main desk will have visual control over the entire library space. In addition to that, there is a fairly large meeting room that is available for use by library patrons. And I believe will be able to be used in going through the secondary entrance that goes into the bridge with the bathrooms and all that will able to be locked out and could be used separate from the library without having to be where the collection was around the people using that. We have a really unique new coming thing in a lot of libraries called a maker space, a creation space. It'll have 3D printers eventually. It'll have a recording room if you need to record something that you're, you know, doing an interview that you need to do for college applications or different things. So you're going to get just a complete state of the, not say the art, I might say, but a 21st century library that will be able to do a lot of the stuff that people want. And the last piece of it is the, this is the 5,000 square foot of unfinished space that will remain unfinished. Eventually, the adult collection can grow or the youth correction, collection can grow. But it's kind of set up in a really good place to be able to let different parts of the, of the library that could grow into that space. And then they have a friends of the library space that y'all have very active friends of the library in this, in this county. And they, they've got a space that they can work on their books that they help do for book drives and sales. Interior designs being done by a professional library interior designer, working with the staff to get the colors that they want and the different pieces that they want. This is an actual furniture layout that is just about finished. We are currently about 50% through the working drawing phase. Our intention is to finish the working drawing phase in late August, permitted, get the drawings completely permitted and have a complete set to go out to bid and have the bids in hand by right around Thanksgiving, early December. We should have the bids in so that an award could be worked on for that. And the idea right now, by the time we get that approved and to board and all that, is that we would start construction in January. And the good news is, is we don't have to work in the dirt. Normally, January is a horrible time to start construction, but we're working on an existing concrete slab. So we don't have, the weather should not be a problem with starting up the construction in January. In your package, we have the floor plans in more detail. We have the elevations, exterior elevations, and then the furniture plant. If anybody wants to dig in deeper on what the current, we have proposed and the staff has told us that they would like to have for your library. And I'll open it up to questions.
You have an estimate on the construction time?
The time, I think right now, we have set, the two estimators that we've talked about have said 10 months, nine to 10 months to build this. Because there's no footings and a lot of the footings are existing and stuff, so that gets us quick. Normally, it would be a little over a year for a new library, nine to 10.
Very good.
You mentioned the, the new beams and the columns. So have you been able to look, see if you could eliminate some of the columns in there and go to the larger beam?
This is extremely long span already. And the, the problem right now is there's only one row of columns down the middle. So we only have five columns to start with. And the collateral loading, if you know structural, the collateral loading on this is three pounds. So we just have to add columns and shorten the span. The good news is, is that we're able to put, to put a steel plate on the bottom of these columns and sit on top of the eight and a half inch concrete slab instead of having to dig brand new footings. But we don't have a way to do this without adding the two rows of columns. But if you look, I mean, we, this column is hidden in a wall. This column is in the workroom for the employees. This wall's in the future space, this one. So out in the big space, we are adding one, two, three, and then four. There's only four of these columns. We hit this one in a wall here. There's only four new columns that are actually out in the area and it's a tremendously big area. I don't think you'll feel like it's, that we encumbered the space with a lot of columns.
Okay.
We, we can't, we can't go deeper. It would be so deep to be able to try to span further.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
Any other questions? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, next item will be variance number P 22-0123 Joseph and Melissa Cannon. This is to allow for an additional driveway less than 200 feet from an existing driveway. It's 1.96 acres located at 1231 Oak Lake Terrace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is variance P 22-0123 Joseph Cannon, owner. This is located in, just off of Oakley Terrace. This is the aerial of the subject property. It is currently zoned R1 in the suburban neighborhood character area. And again, the applicant is requesting variance to allow for an additional driveway that's less than 200 feet from an existing driveway on the same property. In your packets, you have the proposed location of the driveway, the distance from the existing driveway. And staff recommends approval and that it does meet the necessary conditions for granting the variance with two conditions. One, our standard condition, the number two, proposed driveway shall not conflict with the existing double wing catch basin along Oak Lake Terrace. Final design of the driveway shall be approved by the board's director.
Thank you. Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Thank you.
Want to add anything to that?
Not really. I'm glad you did it. I didn't really know what to expect.
All right, cool. That's fine, you just have to see if we have any questions, we may ask them in just a second.
All right.
Thanks. Does anyone else wish to speak for this variance? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. Any questions from commissioners? We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve variance P 22-0123 Joseph and Melissa Cannon to allow additional driveway less than 200 feet from an existing driveway, plus or minus 1.96 acres. Located at 1231 Oakland Terrace, residential with two conditions.
Second.
Motion is second to prove P 22-0123 with two conditions. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next item is variance number P 22-0124 Jennifer Clark to reduce the side yard setback for an accessory building greater than 144 square feet. This is four acres located at 1490 Lane Creek Road.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Again, this is variance P 22-0124 Jennifer Clark. This is the aerial of the subject property just off of Lane Creek Road. That's currently zoned AG in the country states character area. And again, the applicant is requesting to reduce the side yard setback from 25 feet to 10 feet for an existing 1536 square foot barn that is proposed to be converted to a guest house. There is also an administrative variance that's been submitted to our office to allow for the guest house to be placed in the front yard. That is something we would do if the board so approved this variance request. Again, this is the concept plan in your, in your packet that shows the existing barn and driveway and the architectural images and elevations. And staff does believe this meets all the necessary conditions to grant special access variance. And we, with one condition, the side yard setback shall be reduced to 10 feet only in the area of approachment of the existing accessory building as shown on the concept plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're here from the owner or the agent of the owner?
Hey, I'm Montgomery Carroll, this is my wife Jennifer Clark. I don't really think we have anything to add. It was pretty clear, you know, we're just remodeling existing barn.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Does anyone else wish to speak for this variance? Anyone virtually? Does anyone wish to speak against? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll go ahead and close the public comments and open up to any questions from commissioners. All right, we'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve variance P 22-0124 Jennifer Clark to reduce the side yard setback for accessory building greater than 144 feet, plus or minus four acres located at 1490 Lane Creek Road, residential with one condition.
Sir.
Motion is second to prove P 22-0124 with one condition. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Next time is prove the award, awarding of the bid for the administrative building roundabout. Jody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This item of business is a bid award of the construction of the roundabout at State Route 15, Summit Grove Drive, and the new administration building. We received two bids. Two bids were ER Snell at $1,992,183.2 and the second bid was C M E S Incorporated at $2,69,182.59. We have reviewed the bids and recommend award to ER Snell contractor for a not to exceed price of $2,67,183.2, which includes the bid amount of $1,992,183.2 and $75,000 in potential asphalt index price adjustment. And then authorize the chairman to execute necessary documents and approve necessary budget amendments up to the contract amount for the life of the project.
Any questions on that? All right, thank you, Judd. Do we have any public comment on this item? Anyone virtually? With that, we'll open up to any. No questions, we'll entertain a motion on that one.
I make a motion to approve the ER Snell, not to exceed $2,67,183.02 for the administrative building roundabout.
Second.
Have a motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you, motion carries. All right, now we're back to Coal Springs Road. So I'm just going to kind of do a quick summary on where we're at. Talk about what we've learned since last time, we can kind of figure out where to go from here. So Coal Springs Clock Filter Intersection with State Route 53 has had a long time reputation as a problematic intersection. The skew of Coal Springs Road, misalignment of Coal Springs Road, speeds on State Route 53 as well as your typical concerns at intersections about who, who goes first when turning left and that type of thing. Coal Springs Road from Snow's Mill Road to State Route 53 closed on September 16th of 2019, I believe it is. The entire segment is roughly 2,500 feet long. 2,200 feet of that is closed to traffic altogether. There are no existing residential driveways along this segment. There's only one business driveway in the present alignment segment and only one property owner along the entire segment. The closure of this road roughly equates additional 4,200 feet of travel for citizens unable to use this segment of road now that it's closed. On October 26th of 21, an open records request was issued by, to the sheriff's office to get data on crashes before and after the intersection closure. The stated, it's kind of a simplistic approach, just looking at crash before and after. So the stated purpose for collection of the data was to conclude if there was a traffic safety justification for the closure. As we talked about in earlier meetings, I reviewed that data as well as additional crash data and expanded to cover the Snow's Mill Road and Rocky Branch State Route 53 intersection as well as Coal Springs at Snow's Mill intersection. For Coal Springs Clock Filter at State Route 53, the 12th, the one year prior to closure, there were a total of six crashes. Five of those were injury dispatch crashes. For the one year after the closure, there were a total of four crashes and only one injury dispatched crash. Coal Springs at Snow's Mill, the one year prior to closure, there were two accidents. One of those were injury reported accident. After the closure, there was one accident with no injury reported dispatch crashes. Snow's Mill at Rocky Branch and State Route 53, one year prior to the closing, there were nine accidents and five of those were injury dispatched. After the closure, there were six with only three of those being injury dispatched. You heard repeatedly from one of our citizens saying that data concludes there's no traffic safety justification for the closure. Just want to say I wholeheartedly disagree with that. 80%, 80% reduction in injury dispatch crashes at Coal Springs Clock Filter State Route 53. 100% reduction in injury dispatch crashes at Coal Springs at Snow's Mill. All while, all while having a 40% reduction in injury crashes at Snow's Mill, Rocky Branch, and State Route 53, even with the additional traffic. The total crash counts for each intersection decreased by at least one-third after the closure. So no matter how simplistic the approach, I find the data shows significant justification for the closure. And I understand the desire to provide a permanent solution to reopen the roadway, but we still have the reality of a solution taking time, resources, and state coordination. We currently have three ongoing projects with the Department of Transportation now that rank very high on our citizens' list of intersections needing improvement. One is Union Church Road at State Route 53, which has been talked about for a very long time. Malcolm Bridge at Race Church at State Route 53 is currently in design for a roundabout as well as Snow's Mill at Rocky Branch, State Route 53. So really, the question that was before the commission in 2019, we had two choices. Do nothing and wait for the, the funding and the timing for everything to come together to improve that intersection or to close the roadway. So the hypothesis suggesting the closure had to do with the minimal amount of time and the minimal amount of financial resources required to do that. Then we believe the intersection would be safer and the impact to the traveling public would be minimal. So pros for the closure, we've eliminated the skew problem, eliminated the alignment problem. There's been a reduction in intersection conflict points, reduction in crash counts on both ends of the roadway. Reduction in injury dispatch crashes at both ends of the roadway as well. And the improvements that are going to occur at Snow's Mill, Rocky Branch, State Route 53 have the traffic, the additional traffic that was, has to be rerouted that way included in the, in the design. The con is we are forcing folks to travel that additional amount of time in, in 4,200 feet to get back to the same point they would if the road was open. And as was mentioned last week, our method of closure is not aesthetically pleasing by any means, the old barricade. So we've done some checking since our last meeting. There's no engineering standard exists for the signage that was talked about to be placed at Coal Springs and State Route 53. G dot financial participation, whether that's federal or state funding, requires a qualification-based selection of a design professional. So that's a very cumbersome process to go through, which in simple terms, if we started tomorrow, we would be able to award a contract for design on November 1st. That's how long it would take to go through that process. Anything short of using that process to find a, as a dying consultant? Anything short of using that process to find a, as a design consultant will result in one hundred percent funding of the project of rural county county. So really here, here's kind of what the questions are before us tonight. Do we select designer with the state process and worked on a, try to get G, work with G dot on some substantially more funding than is being offered now? We can do the local funding of a roundabout, which will roughly run between two million and two point five million. We could do a local funding and a realignment of Coal Springs Road at a cost of seven fifty to one, one million dollar, one million, seven hundred fifty thousand to one million. If we do the realignment, we're just gonna be just like any other intersection we got. We are gonna increase conflict points and still have the right, the same right of way uh, decisions that people have to make at all other intersections that they come to. That's really kind of where we are in the process and we'll just open up to any discussion anybody's got on how you want to proceed here.
So let's, let's talk about the liability side of this. And I know um, Daniel, we talked a little bit about it at the last meeting, but so if we open this back up, do nothing, what, what's our liability stand on this?
Good question. Um, I, I think there are two issues. One is what's our liability? Generally speaking, we probably aren't going to be liable. The bigger is the, is it's a bad set of facts. If we reopen it and somebody's injured at that intersection. And I know partner Jeanette had a saying, I always remember bad facts make bad law. So we open it back up and three days after we do it, there's a crack out there. It won't matter whether we're liable or not. We're gonna get sued on it. And if we get sued and those facts are thrown to court, I'd be concerned that the court would find a way to make us liable. I mean, to me, looking at it, it just, it, it's there's a huge risk if you open that road back up without making any improvements after you've had it shut for two and a half years. And, and I'm a lawyer and I'm telling you to be cautious, uncouth, but that's how it strikes. The, the, the problem with the road is, the reason you would, you probably wouldn't have liability is that the time that it was designed, it was, it met whatever standards and all that. That road's been there. I mean, as long as any of us has been alive. So before we close it, there was no question. We didn't have any liability for the road design because it met whatever standards. My, my issue is just if you close it and you open it back up and something happens, somebody's probably gonna make the argument, well, it may have been designed properly at the time, but when you reopen it back up after having closed two and a half years, it didn't meet the standards then. And the court's gonna say, oh, well, you should have met standards then. And it's gonna be a slight change in the law with a big consequence. But that's my concern. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask you a couple of questions about the, you mentioned the options. The DOT is asking us to, to retain a design engineer. Is that correct?
Yes, under the, the, the current program, that would be federal funding where they offer the six hundred fifty thousand. That's a totally federally funded process. So that, that would definitely have to go through this design selection by qual, qualifications based. Process is longer, it's more cumbersome. So it's, it's gonna be a little bit more expensive, I think, overall for the amount of money we're getting. Um.
All right. So, but, but remind me again, if we don't get a design engineer to go this route, then
We, we pay the entire freight on the entire project, whatever that turns out to be, whether it's realignment, whether it's roundabout, whatever, bridge, whatever we come up with.
So if, if we hired this design engineer, that you said would be the earliest we could bring him, it's November. What exactly would they be tasked to do? Is to come up with a solution or what? I mean, I'm just curious as to what they would be tasked to do.
Whatever we tell them, whether we wanna, do we just wanna design the roundabout? Do we wanna realign the road? I mean, that will be part of the bid process. We'll have the scope of work in there saying what we want is to, to go there. The, the consensus in our conversation with G dot is that the roundabout would be the best long-term solution there. So it's just a matter of what the board wants to put back in that spot.
All right. Um. And you mentioned this, the uh, figure of seven hundred fifty thousand to a million dollar for a realignment. If we don't hire this state-approved DOT design engineer, do we still gonna have to hire somebody to do the design?
Yes, absolutely.
So if, if we go to this DOT design engineer and, and uh, so they gonna tell us anything different than our own design engineer folk will tell us?
They have to do, there's certain hoops you have to jump through in the process if you're gonna receive federal funding. I don't know this. It's just that it takes time. I mean, if you look at the roundabout we just approved, we went out there, we did, can contact the four or five consultants. They gave us a price. We submitted plans, have been approved, and we just approved the construction contract on it. So that's been a very quick process. The problem is we're writing the entire check for that project as part of our a, adding the additional traffic to the roadway. So it'd be very, very similar to what could happen at Coal Springs. If that's the way the board chooses to go. We could hire our own person, bid out and just construct it. G dot still has oversight. They'll, they'll watch the plans go through and make sure the construction's done properly. Um, but it goes a lot quicker when you're writing a check.
So if we go to DOT round and we come back and we wanna just do the realignment. Is it any more or less, I mean, I'm trying to get an idea of which route to go. We're gonna, if, whichever way we choose, but I'm, I'm kinda like to know specific. And I'm not getting any of that other than we gotta hire somebody, whether it's a DOT engineer or whether it's our own engineer.
Well, that's the specific is that there's gotta be a design consultant involved, period. We're intersecting the state route. Even if we were doing something on our own road, we'd have a design consultant, uh, design that intersection or that road improvement. Um, so
Go the route to hire this, and I keep calling the DOT.
I understand that.
I'm just for lack of better word. If, if the decision at the end was to correct the, the skew and the, and align it. Uh, if we go that route with the DOT engineer, will we get any state or federal funding on that? Or will we carry the whole freight on that?
We'd have an opportunity to, to try to get funding on that, whether it be through quick response money or through a different program within DOT. You've gotta use their process for selecting a di, design consultant to get the funding. You're not guaranteed funding, but you have no chance if you don't go through this process.
So in the county's past experience, I mean, it does it just, is it saving money, but it adds time?
Adds time and would you say it'd make it more expensive, Jody? Possibly. Yes. Yep. So
What you're saying, if we go on our own, it might be end up less expensive than going through the federal process?
Yes, through the federal. Where you're just writing the whole check to improve the intersection at the state route. And that, and that's really kind of our question is, does this super, you know, we got, our next item is five other intersections within the county on county roads that were have, have been impacted or that are we have input that are problematic intersections. So is our, is our money better spent trying to address those five with a million, two, two million dollars? Is this more pressing than those intersections?
But uh, but those, but those design that you're talking about is those five, not three of them in that area, three of the intersections in that Coal Springs area. Lane Creek at Morris Ford, Lane Creek at Snowsmill, and Snowsmill at Coal Springs.
I mean, yeah, this, yeah, this area is getting a lot of, a lot of attention for sure. And then that's based on citizen input over the years, not just recently. But I mean, all those intersections have been called out for as long as I've been on the board. There's places we need to look at with, with concern.
But that's all they're, all we're asking them to do is just look at ways that we can improve those intersections.
Right. And we'll get a construction ready, sell the plans back from this, from that project that we're gonna talk about next. So all five intersections at the end, when we write the final check, we'll have five sets of plans for those intersections on, ready to go construction.
So I'm, I'm, I'm know I'm late to the party, but could we not add this intersection to that, this project? Just answer the question.
Yeah. I mean, that's what we're talking about. That if we, if we wanna go that route, that's no longer than whatever improvements come from that plan will be at county expense. We, we can't use, we can't tag it on to our next item on the list. Cause we did not go through the Brooks Act, is that what they call it? A Brooks Act selection of the, we, we sent some stuff out to some local firm, qualified firms in the state, and they sent something back and we selected one that gave us the best price. And they don't like that for some reason at the federal level.
So it's, it sounds to me as though whether we do it our way, whether we do it, I mean, whether we pay money out of the county or we get it federal, state help or whatever, it's gonna take time. It's gonna take time.
Yes.
No question about that. So I don't know, any of us disagree that we need to make that happen.
I agree.
Whatever time it takes to make it happen. The question at hand is what we're, what can we do now to make it better so we can get it opened up? And then move forward fixing the road the way it needs to be fixed. Because I don't know that we need to keep it closed for two years if it's gonna take two years to fix the road. That's all I'm asking is, it's gonna be a, a while, right?
Yeah.
Be a while.
There's, there's no quick fix, no interim solution that we've been able to come up with at this point.
Jody, if you don't mind, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you a couple of questions. I know you, I know you did the background look and see on signage, stuff like that. I, I've, since our last meeting, I've been looking at every road sign I can look at.
Right.
There were some signs out there that congested area signs, stuff like that that were out there. A question for you. When the roundabout goes down there, it goes to Malcolm Bridge and fifty-three, I mean, it's Snowsmill fifty-three. Is there a reduction in speed limit away from the roundabout? A certain distance back before the roundabout comes up? So currently it's fifty-five, I guess. There's gonna be a roundabout put there and it's gonna be out of sight. Nobody's gonna see that. So they're gonna have to start slowing down before they can get the roundabout. Is there gonna be a reduction on that road in speed back towards Coal Springs Road?
The roundabout should have a speed reduction and then there should be advanced signage on either side of the roundabout saying roundabout ahead or reduce speed ahead, something of that nature, but it will be reduced in the roundabout.
And I know, what's the, what's timeline again for that roundabout having?
It's, we should have should have right of way plans submitted to G dot around the end of the year, around December, January, and then
Well, you're kind of giving a ballpark. I mean, I'm just wondering, is there any way we can get that part fifty-three from Coal Springs or before Coal Springs, the roundabout reduced now?
We can, it, it is a state route, so the state would have to
Yeah, I mean, I figure there's some stuff we gotta go through to make it happen. But is there a way we can, can look at that now and put a request in and see if we can get that done at an earlier date?
Yes, we can definitely request that it be looked at.
Okay. And I'm going back to the science now, okay? Cause once again, everything else is gonna be down the road. So we know we're gonna, we know we gotta make a decision which way we're gonna go long-term to get that road fixed. But what can we do now? And I'm going back to signage once again, because I mean, I'm, I'm for opening the road back up. Mr. Chairman, I appreciate all your comments, but it seemed, I mean, I just, I just know that I, I just, I mean, I just personally think the road can be opened back up personally. I mean, I know that it's, I mean, you've got the results and stuff like that in front of you and everything. But I mean, we haven't done anything. We dropped the ball on this. Once we closed it, we kind of let it go. And we haven't tried anything. We're talking about the big picture and we know the big picture has to be fixed, but we haven't done anything to see if it helps out that road with red, fresh and light stop signs or any other sign we may come up with. I know you've done the research on that, but I know there's other signs out there that show that there's an area of congestion. So I'm just wondering, why can't we go with those, some of these, why can't, can we put flashing lights up before on fifty-three? Is that something we could get approved?
Yes, I'm, I'm
For that intersection?
Clock filter and Coal Springs. Yes.
Yeah. Can we not? I mean, seems, these are reasonable prices. We could pay for these things and see if we can reduce some of the problems before we, once again, I still think we need to go the big route and fix it, but it's gonna take years, it sounds like. And I just know that we, we haven't done anything okay, simpler, simpler, just to see if we can reduce the problem. And I, I saw, I'm just throwing it out because I don't know what we can do yet neither. I know that we gotta fix the road, but I wanna know what we can do right now so that we can get the road open. That's why I'm asking. And we have done anything. I mean, that's the point. We haven't done anything except put barricades up.
The, the conversations we have had with G dot, the skew is, is a concern.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, so I think without doing anything, the skew would need to be addressed. And so from what G dot had told us is that they would have to look at it and, and study it to see if the improvements that we propose are addressing safety needs or if they're creating additional safety needs. So before we reopen it, they would want to look at that.
I think that's fine. It's, I mean, can we not put a proposal in and so on, showing that we wanna put flashing lights up at that, at that intersection, red stop signs that are flashing? Other signs are congested, congested area. I mean, can we not put a, a thing in for that and let G dot look at it and see if that's an idea that we're going in the right direction for that temporarily until we get the big fix done?
Yes, we can. The, the district has been very cooperative and very, very open to discussing and they're, they're offering suggestions they can. I mean, they, they are our partner and they want to work together with us.
Anybody else? Anybody wanna tag on?
No, we I, I dress it, you correct it. Well, me, even, even if we do without correcting the skew, you can put fireworks displays out there.
No, no, but
Well, I don't care whether you agree with me or not, I'm gonna say it. Uh, we disagreed in the past and we can probably have over the time. Stop signs, I, I don't care. We can have lights. I mean, I, I, there's some going over to Hartwell and I go with good bit. But you still gotta stop. And if, if it's, if it's a, if it's ninety degrees, it's easy. When you gotta look back, different directions, that, that's different. Even with the, the, the lights. Uh, and I'm not opposed. I mean, I, whole way stops, probably all of them are have lights and stuff, but, but when it's off-centered, it's a different issue to me. And so I, I, with stop signs, you know, if that's the direction to go, that's fine, but you still got that skew. So, and I think that's what probably got us to this point. So, and I think that's what probably got us to this point, so.
I'm not going to disagree with you, we still got the skew problem, and that's why we need to address it in the future. All I'm saying is, is right now, that road's been there forever as long as we can remember, and yes, we did, I mean, we, we, we had some, some citizens concerned and we, and once again. We closed it because the citizens concerned it, but we ain't done nothing about it.
And I may, I may agree with you with that one, that, that.
But we haven't tried anything.
Yeah, well, whatever, whatever. But I think, I think the issue that concerns me is there, there's. Intersections and we're looking at it, but this one we closed. Knowing that there was a safety issue, knowing. So you open it back up. Safety issues, thanks. And we knew it. There's no blame to anybody else, but they're going to look at us, I agree. And so I, I'm just, that's my concern is that. We know it and we can't throw it at DOT. So, yeah, if, if we open it up and it's still skewed. Difficult, then whatever happens, Daniel gets involved. So that, that's my concern is that, yeah, we may have not jumped on it and, and cleaned it up like we should, I, you know, whatever, but. We open it up with no real improvements. And we all sitting here talking about this skew. Then something happens, which it will, which it will. Uh. To me, that the best thing to do would be have a roundabout to match up with the others. That, that slows a bunch of traffic before it gets to those schools. And.
Don't disagree with you that one.
So we aren't, we aren't agreeing on some.
We ain't disagreeing on that, but I say we need to fix it long term, no matter what.
Yeah, I, it, so I, that's, that's my worry is trying to find a quick thing to get it opened up. With the issue that we, while we closed it, still sitting there and some kid gets hurt here in a few weeks. Uh. What you going to say? So that, that's, that's my, I'm, I'm saying.
Mr. Chairman, if we, if we advance the idea to go ahead and retain it for, for our own design folks. To, uh, to, to put some meat on these bones about correcting the skew. Uh, because, uh. I mean, I think that's what I would like to see, and I, I, I'm not want to kick this thing another thirty days down to the next meeting, I mean, we've been talking about this for. For, but it seems like a long time, I know it's, it's only been two or three meetings, but y'all been dealing with it longer before I came on the board. Uh, but, uh, I would, I'd like for us to consider, uh, if my fellow commissioners would agree to go ahead and re- retain a design engineer to give us specifics on, on what. We can do to correct the skew and a price tag that the DOT would be happy with. And get that, that skew fixed, so we don't have to retain Daniel Haygood's representative counties in Portland. And we can add, and that same design engineer can, can piggyback on what Chairman Saxon, excuse me, Commissioner Saxon wanted to. As far as the signage, because I think that's an important aspect of this as well. But I'm, I'm ready tonight to, to make the motion, uh, to, to most, to retain a design engineer. Uh, to get this, uh, intersection skew corrected, so we can get it back, opened back up.
Okay, we have a motion to go with local funding. Select a design consultant for skew correction at Cold Springs, Lotfield, from State Route fifty-three. Do we have a second?
I want to make sure I understand. We're, he, we, the motion is to fix the skew, you have it as a, as a, basically as still as a crossover with the.
That's correct.
Stop signs.
Yes.
And not move forward with roundabout?
That would be. No, that's not part of this motion, that's, the motion is to, that, that is your quickest path to opening Cold Springs Road back up. Is to go with local funding to correct the skew. And that's what the motion is right now, to do the first step in that, which is hire the consultant to do the realignment.
But if you want me to add that to that, but eventually, long term, to do a roundabout, I'm, I'm fine with adding that in there as well. All I'm trying to do is retain an engineer to, because that's seems to be the stomach point, I get. You know, it used to, we've had to bring our lawyers with us, now we got to bring our engineers with us. Sorry, Mr. Mr. Chairman, but, but, uh. You know, uh, seem like the, the world doesn't operate unless we hire an engineer, so let's give one on board. Get us the specifics on, 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 uh, what it's going to cost us and, and the, what the DOT is going to be, and it may be. That there's a two-step process to that, fix the skew, put up the signs, the flash of signs, and then eventually. Work toward a roundabout. Which is long term. That would be my motion.
Do we have a second? Sound like motion dies for lack of a second, anybody else want to try?
I'd make a motion that we, um, move forward with the roundabout. And try to get as much funding from DOT as possible. Even though it may take a little bit longer, but I think money wise, we'd be well spent and then we won't be issued, and we won't be dealing with the li- uh, the liability side of it. That's it.
So a motion in a second to select the design consultant through the qualif- qualification based method. In order to be eligible for Department of Transportation funding, is that correct? Any discussion on that?
Does that mean that we are going to fix the skew first, or are they going to fix it when they do the roundabout?
We're going to go for the roundabout on that motion.
And that fixes skew at the same time?
Yes, that'll be part of it.
They wouldn't do it unless it comes.
Yeah, it's going to, this, skew's going to have to be.
The whole intersection.
Got to be fixed.
Off, four roads will be fixed.
My, my, just have a good feeling that doing a roundabout probably makes it a lot easier fixing the skew. Wouldn't make any pretty much difference where they're in or.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No. No.
Okay, Chair votes aye, motion carries.
All right, Jody, I think we're ready for the next one. Discussion of the multi, multi-intersection. Design project.
Uh, this item of business was presented last meeting and it is five, design of five intersections and the, the, the basis of design would be a roundabout at all five intersections. And the, I can go get my, my notes that, on the price, but it, the, the, uh, low bidder was Clear Course. And they are. Uh, it's, it's a collaboration with WNA Engineering and a couple of the firms and, and Brent Cook, former district engineer with GDOT is, would be heading that project up, so. So the, the recommendation would be to award to Clear Course at the, the bid price and authorize the chairman to execute documents and then authorize any future. Uh, budget amendments for the life of the project up to the contract amount.
Okay, so the five intersections are Lane Creek at Morris Ford, Lane Creek at Snow's Mill. Snow's Mill at Cold Springs. Union Church at High, New High Shoals Road, and then Ascendale at Colin Perry. Correct?
That's correct.
Yes. And we had talked about the state route when it, uh. Hebron Church, but that can't, because of the funding mechanism, we're not pursuing that, because that would mess us up for federal funding. So those are five intersections that'll, uh, be, they'll bring us construction ready, so as, as money comes available, there's some kind of special grants that come up, we could, we'll be able to apply for stuff and be ready to go. Any other questions on that?
Yeah, just help me, uh, Jody, to visualize, when we get this report back, uh, let's just pick on Lane Creek at, uh, Morris Ford. What, I mean, give me an idea of, when they say they're going. Improvements, what, what, what are they going to say? Well, a- as I mentioned, the basis of design is roundabout, so that's what we've asked them to price. And they will do the study to see that a roundabout is feasible. And if it's not, if it happened to be not feasible in that location, because, uh, depending on. The movements coming into it, if, if like one was a lot higher volume than the side streets, they do look at things like that, but, um. For the most part, the, the goal would be to have plans designed for a roundabout. And let, let's keep picking on Morris Ford and Lane Creek, so we had issues with that intersection over the years. And it, as you said in your memo, that request from citizens. That's correct. And, and the complaint has been about the accidents. What, what's, when you say the citizens request, what, what does the citizens involve? Most of the time they call them on improvements at the intersection.
Improve.
Yes. Let me ask you a question, I'm, I'm not trying to be funny, it's going to come across as being funny, hopefully, don't take it anyway. But I could say it was a lot of money, you just go out there and put four-way stop. Just that.
Sure.
I mean, that's. Save you a lot of money. We didn't count a lot of them.
Well, I mean, one of those on there is a four-way stop, and we still, New High Shoals at Union Church Road.
Yes.
And we still have accidents there, still have injury accidents at a four-way stop. And that's one of the roads I've traveled a good bit, and you'd be surprised how many folks just shoot right through there, so.
Oh, you sound like Commissioner Saxon's flashing signs would stop that, but like, I'm just saying, I've just.
I don't, I don't know you.
If, if there are issues that, that are facing us today and we're talking about a roundabout and funding's available, we're still talking about. You know, pushing this thing on down the road, so I'm.
But how long have these intersections been existing? Right, I mean, these, these intersections go way back. Some to eighteen seventy-five, before, when it just became a county. And, and here, we're, we're putting ourselves in a position. To make these intersections function better and safer for our citizens, something that other boards have not been able to do, so I think this is a huge step forward, we're, we're planning for the future, we. We're listening to what our citizens are telling us, hey, I think this is a dangerous intersection. Is it to the level of some of the others, maybe, maybe not, but clearly over the years, these are the ones that come to the top of the list. And. I've seen some pretty serious accidents in almost every one of these. And thank goodness they're few and far between, but our population's increasing. The other good thing about a roundabout is also, like Mark was talking about. It reduces the speed, which is another contributor to a lot of the accidents along our roadways. So there on Lane Creek, which can be a speedway at certain times of day. At least for that portion, and then if we get a roundabout up there at, at the Snow's Mill. They're going to slow down a little bit to get through there, um. So.
But I guess my point, I was trying to make, I don't disagree with you, I'm going to vote in favor of this motion, but I'm just saying, if, if we're going to have to wait to get a roundabout built, if there's an issue out there today. You know, it could be just, I mean, I'm just throwing that out there, so, you know, if that's an issue today.
Well, unfortunately, there's a study that needs to be done to do four-way stop and a three-way stop.
That is true, there, there are warrants for multi-way stops that, that would be looked at.
And so we're, we're just now got to the point where we meet warrants for traffic seeing on State Route fifty-three and Union Church Road. And we've been, that's been talked about since I was in high school, so it's. Yeah, so it's, it's a long, it's a long-term process. None of this is, is quick fix stuff, and, but we're, we're putting ourselves in a position to be ready to go and, and make this community safer than it is today.
Good argument, I appreciate it.
Thanks. Any other questions? Thank you, Jody, any public comment on this item?
I can't see, I live on Lane Creek. At the end of, I'm Dan Dawson. I live on the end of it and I cannot see the more important part at Lane Creek and Morris Ford than Cold Springs at fifty-three in Lotfield. Now, Mr. Horton here, a couple of months ago, voted with, with several of them and said that he, uh. Wanted to reopen the road. Last meeting, he said he was proud they closed it, now I'm confused. Uh, you're still kicking the thing down the road, a roundabout will be great, but I probably won't live to see it. That's the point that I'm trying to make, Coleman Hood has said the same thing. And, and we've been living on that for years, uh, Coleman forty years, me fifty years, at where I'm at. And I've talked with Amory and I've talked with, uh, gentlemen back here about doing something at Lane Creek and Cold Springs. There's going to be a school bus wreck there one of these days, and it's going to involve a lot of children. Go there, that angle i- is such an angle, the school bus has to take all four lanes to make its turn. Now, they come out and Mark to make it a little, a little better, easier turn for a ve- small vehicle, but not for a school bus, is not going to make it. I'm not asking for a roundabout there, I've asked several times about the old dirt road that's up there between my property and, uh. Used to be select trees, I don't know who it is now, but it road been, it was closed, put up sign, took the stop signs down and put private drive. I've asked that that be looked at, to be opened back up and gravelled for the school bus only. If, if you're looking at safety, now that would be safety. Mail route, school bus, UPS trucks or whatever, can, could use that instead of coming down there and trying to make that turn at my house. Uh, I don't know if I'm going to get anywhere talking or not, because I've been here for the last three or four months, and like I say, I'm more confused tonight than I was the first time I came. Uh, the thing about hiring an engineer to, to look at that inter- intersection, I can't believe the county doesn't have an engineer. Uh, O'Conne County is not one of the poorest counties in the state. Uh, look at what the development, we've got local option sales tax over here also, the O'Conne Connector. Property tax one of them, they keep going up. You're talking about real soon putting on another local option sales tax, the last one was defeated, I'm almost sure the next one might be. As long as you keep going up on taxes and you got all of this revenue coming in from these other things been, that's been added. Folks like me can't stay in the county, I've stayed here and paid for my farm, but living on social security now, and what few cows I raised on fifty or sixty acres. Will not pay the increase that I'm having to pay in taxes. That's all I got to say, thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone virtually? Thank you. We got a motion, say we're ready to vote on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Does any item, any commissioner wish any item to be removed from consent agenda? Do we entertain a motion for approval? Do we entertain a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent items as presented.
Second.
Here, a motion second to approve consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Would you need to executive session discuss land acquisition?
Make a motion that we approve, that we, um, go into executive session, the land acquisition, so.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Need a motion to go back in regular session?
Slow move, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner Saxon.
Second.
Second. We are adjourned, thank you.